Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is our Spotlight, and we'll turn this over to Ms. Keys.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Before we start our Spotlight section of our agenda this evening, tonight, we had many students from Norwalk High School come, and they actually had a wonderful presentation and showed us many of the murals that are here, and they're all fascinating. Several of the board members came, as well as the public, and I'd like to first have Susan Wallerstein come up, and she can explain a little bit more about the program.
It's the school system, it's all about students, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It's supposed to be.
My name is Susan Wallerstein, 223 Wolf Pit Avenue. I'm chairman of the Norwalk Arts Commission. On behalf of my colleagues Lynn Call and Suzanne Enzirion, I'm here to recognize seven students who recently completed a summer WPA mural student docent program, and to thank some of the people who made this possible. This program, which integrates the arts with 21st century skills, was funded through a grant from the National Endowment for the Arts. Thanks to Gloria Tonofsky of the Norwalk Education Foundation, and Navelet Peterkin of the Carver Foundation for suggesting this program might be a good fit for the freshman academies at Norwalk High and Bryan McMahon. Special thanks to Maureen Ireland, math department chair and freshman academy director, for her extraordinary professionalism, first by the courtesy of even responding to an email, and then by inviting us to pitch the program to students. Thanks to these seven students, five of whom are here tonight, who selected this offering from among many afternoon electives. They could have gone to the computer room, they could have gone to the weight room, they could have played basketball or played other games, they chose this program. Special thanks to, and she's here tonight, Norwalk High and Freshman Academy staff member Jackie Morgan, for helping with logistics, and also embracing this program in her heart. Thanks to local oysterman Norm Bloom, Dick Harris from Harbor Watch, for helping all of us get a better understanding of the facts and stories behind the goals related to oystering. Thanks to former Norwalk students Jermaine West and DuVian Montoya for sharing their personal experiences as professional artists. And thanks to Norwalk 2.0 for helping record the students' experiences through digital video. And special thanks to the students' families who are here tonight for raising such delightful and engaging young people. It really takes a village. And so tonight, I'd like you to join me in recognizing Raúl de González, Taylor Queens, Victoria Pico, Jackie Morales, and Demetra Tony. Thank you.
Thank you to all the students for coming, and also thank you for the tour that you gave us this evening. Tonight for our Spotlight, a Norwalk Public Schools, for tonight, August 5th, 2014. Tonight, the Board of Education recognizes the SENG Honor Roll induction of Mr. Lewis Weinberg, a science teacher from West Rock's Middle School. SENG stands for Supporting Emotional Needs for the Gifted. It's a national organization. SENG's mission is to empower families and communities to guide gifted and talented individuals to reach their goals. The SENG Honor Roll recognizes educators who make a difference in the life of a gifted child or an adult. A sixth grade science teacher for over 10 years, Mr. Weinberg describes his teaching style as "active as well as engaging." He's a frequent traveler, and also an active member of community organizations such as Westport Community Gardens and the Green Village Initiatives. Mr. Weinberg encourages students to make connections between the concepts they study to how the concepts play out in the actual real world. Mr. Weinberg was nominated for the SENG Honor Roll by West Rock's parent Denise Moses. Mr. Weinberg joins two other current Norwalk teachers on the SENG Honor Roll. We have Lisa Kaplan, as well as Kenneth Wood, both of Tracy Elementary School. On behalf of everyone here on the Board of Education, tonight, we recognize Mr. Weinberg for his support of gifted children and his induction into the SENG Honor Roll.
It's a real honor to have three of our teachers on that Honor Roll, and I also wanted to thank the kids who gave us the tour. I've been coming into this building since I was here in 10th grade in 1970, and I learned some things about those paintings today that I didn't know all that time, so it was a real pleasure. The next item is going to be Public Comments. Ms. Keys is getting the sign-up sheet. She disappeared. She's out there somewhere getting the sign-up sheet. Where'd she go? Keys. Sign-up sheet's right here. Heidi! Nope. We've lost Heidi. She's wandering around outside, somebody grabbed her. Where'd she go? Right there. There you go. They were right there on the table. All right?
Good evening, everyone again. Tonight, we have our Public Comments. When I call your name, if you can please come up and state your full name and address for the records. You'll have approximately 30 minutes. I will wave my hand like this.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, I'm sorry. We'd be here till tomorrow night.
Never get home.
Three minutes. I'll wave my hand when you have 30 seconds left. Please be civil in your comments. The first person that we have up tonight is Brenda Penn Williams.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Penn Williams. I reside at 21 Karen Drive, Norwalk, Connecticut. My question is, Mr. Lyons, why have you refused to meet with the NAACP? On behalf of the NAACP, I would like to thank you for allowing me to be heard. Thank you.
Next person that we have up is Andre Williams.
Good evening. Andre Williams, 118 West Cedar Street, Norwalk, Connecticut. I have two questions for Mr. Lyons. Mr. Lyons, do you consider yourself a city employee? According to the city charter, common council members are considered part-time city employees because they get a monthly stipend. But the education members don't get a monthly stipend, so they are not considered city employees according to the city charter. And also, are you represented by Mr. Lyons? Because if you are not a city employee...
Mr. Spar.
I'm sorry. Are you represented by Mr. Spar? Because if you are not a city employee, Mr. Spar cannot represent you. Thank you.
Daisy Franklin.
My name is Daisy Franklin. I reside at 82 South Main. My question is, Mr. Chairman, do you endorse the comments Mr. Tremonti made about Ms. Mosby? On behalf of the NAACP, I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak and be heard. Thank you.
Jackie Steiner.
My name is Jacqueline Steiner. I live at 98 Comstock Hill Avenue in Norwalk, and I would like to ask Chairman Lyons if he endorses the characterization made by Mr. Chiaramonti of Ms. Shirley Mosby as "the girl who cried black." And I thank you for letting me talk. Thank you.
Carolyn Fuller.
My name is Carolyn Fuller. I reside at 100 Stewart Avenue for the past 50 years. So, and I am also a member of the executive board of the NAACP, and I've worked for many, many years with the children of Norwalk. And what I want to say is that everybody throws out diversity. Diversity. What does that mean? I'd like to know if the Board of Education would let us know what they think is diversity, because from what we see in the community, it's not happening. And we want it to happen, and we are going to get our parents organized and hold everybody here accountable for all of our children. Thank you.
Angela Harrison.
Hi, my name is Angela Harrison. I live at 7 Sable Street. I also have been a resident of Norwalk forever, born here. But the statement that Mr. Lyons made about the woman who cried black, I think enough of us ain't crying black, because what I see going on in the school system, that policies that the board is well aware of, that is affecting our children, that are being used against them, holding them back, making them hate school, quit, not want to be a part of, not enjoying school. School should be something that they should be thriving at, enjoying, and looking forward to come. That is not the situation. You have a principal, who I like to call "to the carpet," at Briggs, who is also using the pipeline to her advantage, the prison pipeline, by sending our young men to court. And I'm saying that I just think that when people come, and we come in good faith and hoping that you hear our cries, but like my sister Carol said, you know, you can only do what we keep allowing you to do. So when the people are going to stand up and do what they have to do, and to come against your policies, and to come against the way that our children are being treated, suspended, put out of school, locked up, and the behavior of that you allow in your school system to come against us. Thank you.
Stanley Shuler. Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry. Darnell Crossland. Thank you for bringing that up.
Hi, good afternoon. Good evening. For the record, Darnell Crossland, I represent the Norwalk Board of NAACP, and I'm the president. I live at 25 Grand Street, Norwalk. It's my second time here on this issue. The reason why I'm standing here today is because initially, we brought to the board's attention that there were some issues that existed between certain board members and other board members, more specifically, Ms. Mosby, McDally Rivera, and Ms. Murray. And while those issues were pending, we, it was a disappointment, I think, to all of us that we read in the paper that Mr. Chiaramonti sort of insensitively used the words, and I quote, "Shirley Mosby," or "Ms. Mosby, the girl who cried black." So, in the meantime, when we brought this to the board's attention in the beginning, the idea here was, well, in order to see if this really is an issue here, that perhaps you guys present something to us to substantiate these feelings. Other than that, they seem to be empty feelings. Well, while we were still trying to work this out with the administration, we were met with these comments, and I think that they speak for themselves. So I think that everybody in this room, if you read these comments while this is pending, it's quite clear now that there's some issues. And I think that the only reason why I'm standing here today is because we respect the office. And my question to the office, the office of chairman, is has anything been done about this? Do you plan to make a public statement about this? And do you support those comments made by Mr. Chiaramonti?
Stanley Shuler.
Good evening. I'm Stanley Shuler, Local 1042. I reside in Stratford. I'm the president of Local 1042. And I'm here because I'm concerned. I've been coming here for like a year and a half. In April, I came, and back in November 2013, I've been coming here asking the same thing about communication amongst the board and amongst my workforce here. I heard rumors about privatizing. I came before the board and asked some questions about that. I spoke to Mr. Barbas. He had set up a meeting with us from City Hall. The board members wasn't there, and we were a little upset with that. And then we had a private meeting, executive meeting, and was asking questions about us being privatized, our jobs and stuff like that. And it wasn't no surprise, because half the board members didn't know what was going on. The same thing happened a few weeks ago, when they had this company come in, seven companies come in over there at Columbus, and they refused to let our guys come in. I was away in Chicago on union business, and asked a couple of my officers to go in to see what was going on, and it was turned down and refused. And I think this is terrible, because I've been here, I lived in Norwalk just for all my life. I live in Stratford now, but I went to school here. I mentor here. I have cooking classes here. Not only me, but a lot of my members here that work in the system, came through the system. We're more than just clean toilets. We work with kids, we outreach service here, we do a lot for the community, and I think it is very disrespectful to have, to continue to have private meetings, not only with the board, but even with management, when we come and ask questions. Respect us as a union. You know, they don't respect us as a union. We just clean toilets or whatever. We do more besides that. And I would, it's a shock that it has continued from like a year and a half, as me becoming president, it's the same old, same old. It's the same old, same old. And I think it's kind of bad for a person who works for the city to have to ask management, for labor management meeting, to sit down and talk. And we was doing pretty good for a while, but all of a sudden, we got new players, and then we're back to the same old, same old. Thank you.
Charlie Wyatt.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Wyatt. I reside at 231 Lincoln Avenue, currently in Bridgeport, but I was born and raised here in Norwalk, vice president of the Local 1042, over at Cranberry Elementary School. And I'm here standing, not just for Local 1042, but also in solidarity with the parents' union, asking the same question. Do you condone, do you condone the statements that were made? And my question for 1042 is, why is it you are insisting on allowing strangers into our buildings with our children to do our work? Would you like answers? And the third question would be, why is there appear to be a division amongst the board? It seems like half the board doesn't communicate with the other half of the board, and what we see is in disarray. And for the Board of Education in charge of Norwalk Public Schools, y'all need to do better. Thank you.
Scotty Nails.
Good evening. I'm Scotty Nails. I reside in Milford, but attended Honey Hill Elementary School, West Rock's Middle School, and Class of '87 at Norwalk High School, where I currently work as a security guard. I'm very proud to say I do a lot in the city of Norwalk, even though I no longer reside here. The most important thing tonight to me is not about the board, not about us here, it's about the kids. And for all these parents, for all these parents to come here and complain about what the board is not doing, and certain things that are being said, certain people like myself, Stanley Shuler, that do things that you can't put a price on, talking to these kids, raising these young black males, letting them know they are somebody, they can be somebody. Even though there's a couple board members missing, I see four seats. I think the gap with this board right now is bigger than that, and we really need to get it together, because I've worked a lot with you, and we will continue to work with you as long as you work with us, and most important, listen to us. Thank you.
John Mosby.
My name is John Mosby. I live at 15 Addison Avenue. I'm so glad to see so many people out here tonight. You have been telling my daughter, my son, and me, and I'm telling you tonight, we're going to stand up and fight. I'm going to be very brave. You all know today, you got that human rights complaint, I got it right now, and I gave it to all y'all. We getting ready to go now, and let them investigate. You try to play with and ruin my reputation. Everybody know I worked in this school since over 30-some-year, 33-years, plus my hump. I've been head of the unit for over 30-years. They know I know what I'm talking about. But tonight, I'm not going to get into that, but what I want to say tonight is that I want to support these custodians and maintenance workers. These some good guys, and they look up to me, because they know I should look out for them. And I want to say to these custodians, and to you tonight, if you can go down there and keep those 11 people from my town center, you should keep these custodians, all of these good men here. And I want to say to you all too tonight, it's a lot of things y'all putting in them newspapers about me is totally not true, putting in about my daughter. She won by over 7,500 people, and she's a good girl. And I'm not going to let you push us out anyway. And I didn't like what you say, so I'm not trying to be personal, but you and Mr. Lyons, you all say, and I spread in the paper, when the NAACP don't want to meet with you, Mr. Lyons, you say you weren't going to meet. When can you hear a bunch of that's going to sugarcoat this thing? And some of these politicians running for office, if they don't get up off the high and represent us, we going to vote them out. I told that stupid gentleman, all the money coming here going into each other's school, and they ain't doing nothing for bridge up there, that school is leaking, all the money. I bet with you an hour to help this school. You pounding me over to county munitions college, what you going to do? Y'all ignore, and just running all the black people out of this town. And I'm getting tired of it, while these leaders setting up your showing the teeth. Well, I was in Norwalk for 50 years, I'm a homeowner, taxpayer, and I'm sick and tired of what I'm saying. And I want to thank the public for being here tonight. Thank you very much.
Gregory Brayboy. Not here? Okay.
My name is Gregory Brayboy. I just like, I reside at 1 Ohio Avenue in Norwalk. I just like to say that the kids in Norwalk, they love the custodians. One kid came up to me and asked me, was I the president of the United States? And I'm like, you know, I didn't know what to tell him, but that's how they are, you know? So, I just wanted to let you know that they need us. They need us. Just back us up, that's all. Back us up.
Joseph Bocafusto.
Hi, I'm Joseph Bocafusto of 11th Street, Norwalk, Connecticut. I'm a custodian at Columbus, but I'm also a parent there. I could probably do a lot of talking about why I think you should keep us, based as a custodian, because I do the job there, and I know the school, but I would like to talk to you more as a parent, because there, as we're hearing through our union and everything, there's been questionable hires from the company that was hired to do our grass, and just the companies that you receive bids from, there's questionable employees in those companies too. And it doesn't even seem like it's a concern of the safety of the kids. So there's that aspect that a lot of parents I've been in contact with are worried about, but also around the building. I know we're very involved in all the safety measures that have been going on, and like the tabletop forum and everything that all the side custodians had to go to and participate in. We're very involved in the safety of the building, and if you're going to bring an outside company in who isn't, who the employees are rotating, and they're not as invested as we are, because the people in the school are like our families, and the children are like distant relatives in some way. It's like, we care about them, we want to do what's best for them, we go the extra mile for them. We know we're cleaning for a kid. We're not doing it for you guys, we're doing it for the kids. That's what we're doing. And there's many things around our building that we could worry about, like if you're hiring an outside company to do snow, are they going to be there during the day, all day, to see if it needs to be salted while parents are coming in and out of the building? There's things like that. I'm concerned as a taxpayer and a custodian, because you guys are saying you're saving money, but you're not telling us any ways that you're saving money. Like, we could see that you hired a grass company, you're going to have to hire somebody to do snow, you're going to have to hire somebody to clean. Now, all these costs are going to come together. Now, is this cleaning company, are they also going to do repairs that we do? We do more than just clean the bathrooms and clean the classrooms. I'm sitting in a chair right now that's broke. Is your cleaning crew fixing that chair, or do you have to get somebody to come in and do that? Because these are the things that we see in a school and we take care of. We don't just clean. And as a parent, it really bothers me that you guys can make this decision from desk at City Hall, instead of coming to schools and talking to us and asking us what we think you could do to improve things and maybe save costs. You can't make this decision from City Hall. You should come to the schools and talk to the principals and the staff, and see how you can make improvements without just trying to get rid of all of us to try to save some money. Thank you.
Susan Matthews.
I just like to say that the kids in Norwalk, they, they, they love the custodians. One, one kid came up to me and asked me, was I the President of the United States? And I'm like, you know, I said, I said, I said, I didn't know what to tell them, but that's how they are. You know? So, I just wanted to let you know that they need us, they need us. Just back us up, that's all. Back us up.
Hi, I'm Joseph Bocafusto of 11th Street, Norwalk, Connecticut. I'm a custodian at Columbus, but I'm also a parent there. I could probably do a lot of talking about why I think you should keep us, based as a custodian, because I do the job there and I know the school, but I would like to talk to you more as a parent. Because there, as, as we're hearing through our union and everything, there's been questionable hires from the company that was hired to do our grass and just the companies that you receive bids from, there's questionable employees in those companies too. And it doesn't even seem like it's, like it's a concern of the safety of the kids. So there's that aspect that a lot of parents I've been in contact with are worried about. But also around the building, I know we're very involved in all the safety measures that have been going on and like the tabletop forum and everything that all the side custodians had to go to and participate in, we're very involved in the safety of the building. And if you're gonna bring an outside company in who isn't, who the employees are rotating and they, they, they're not as invested as we are because the people in the school are like our families. And the children are like distant relatives in, in some way. It's like we care about them, we want to do what's best for them, we go the extra mile for them. We, we know we're cleaning for a kid, we're not doing it for you guys, we're doing it for the kids. That's what we're doing. And there's, there's many things around our building that we, we could worry about, like if you're hiring an outside company to do snow, are they gonna be there during the day, all day, to see if it needs to be salted while parents are coming in and out of the building? There's things like that. I'm concerned as a taxpayer and a custodian, because you guys are saying you're saving money, but you're not telling us any ways that you're saving money. Like, we could see that you're, you're, you're gonna, you hired a grass company, you're gonna have to hire somebody to do snow, you're gonna have to hire somebody to clean. Now, all these costs are gonna come together. Now, is this cleaning company, are they also gonna do repairs that we do? We do more than just clean the bathrooms and clean the classrooms. I'm sitting in a chair right now that's broke. Is your cleaning crew fixing that chair or do you have to get somebody to come in and do that? Because these are the things that we see in a school and we take care of. We don't, we don't just clean. And as a parent, it, it really bothers me that you guys can make this decision from desk at City Hall, instead of coming to the schools and talking to us and asking us what we think you could do to improve things and maybe save costs. You can't make this decision from City Hall. You should come to the schools and talk to the principals and the staff and see how you can make improvements without just trying to get rid of all of us to try to save some money. Thank you.
I live at 56 Cove Avenue in Norwalk. I'm here because I have some questions and concerns about the privatization of the maintenance staff in Norwalk. I'm a parent of children in Norwalk. I do, my youngest child will be going into high school this fall. I'm worried that if a contractor comes in and does the maintenance in all the schools, who will take care of our children? Who will take care of your children? Now, from what I understand, the employees of Norwalk, they have to be fingerprinted, go through background checks, they're pretty well vetted, I hope. And I have confidence in that. But who will be in charge of that for the contractor? Will the contractor be in charge of that? Who's in charge of overseeing the administration, administrative portion of that? I'm not really comfortable with strangers coming in to the schools, perhaps, and substitute workers coming into the schools. I think that when you're talking about privatization, contractors may want to keep costs low so they can have profits high, you know? And what's not in the contract will be, I think, they won't want to do what's not in the contract. And so therefore, the money that you're saving will go out the window. So what is the safety of my child? What is that worth? Is it worth $50,000? Is it worth $100,000? I'm also, I'd also like to speak as a taxpayer. I'm, I am worried about that. I'm worried about that there are these hidden details that aren't being taken care of that will cost the Board of Education in Norwalk more in the end. So, I'm, and, you know, I'm sorry. But on a more personal note, I would like to say what I've said here so far, I've said with respect and I appreciate the contribution that you've all made. I do worry about, what does this say to the community? What does this say to my neighbors, my family, my friends? What does this say about the people or to the, what about loyalty? What about devotion? What about saying that it's, I have to go.
You have thirty seconds, thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, okay. So what is it teach, what is it teaching our children about those things? Commitment, what does it say about, what are we saying to those people who come to work every day, ready to work hard and make a contribution in this school here in Norwalk?
Peter Thor?
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Peter Thor. I live at Four Betts Place in Norwalk. I have, I lived here for a long time. My children went to school in the Norwalk schools. I currently am, I work for ASME Council for, I represent the local 1042. I'll start by asking you this, I hope you've heard, I hope you've heard what the people of Norwalk are telling you. I've been at the bargaining table most of my adult life and there have been times when there's something rational that can be, that where the private sector can be brought in. For example, if, if Norwalk needed to build a bridge and it doesn't have bridge engineers, bring in, bring in a private engineer. There are some rational times to bring in a private, somebody from the private sector. But I reject it when it doesn't make good sense. And here it makes no sense at all. America has by far the largest economy in the world, by no means because of our work ethics or our, or, or our ingenuity. Our economy is large because we expanded our middle class like no middle class in the world has been expanded before. Now we're going in the wrong direction. We're trading good middle class jobs that pay, for, for jobs that pay so poorly that workers qualify for food stamps at our expense. I have been told that this plan is about saving money by reducing the cause, the, the cost of labor by member, members of the board. I find that morally questionable and a strategic error. America's great middle class won't be dismantled by one swift blow up by small cuts like this. No custodians are getting rich, Mr. Chairman, but they do have decent jobs, you heard that. And that give them time to spend with your, with their children and provide them with the vital support that is part of the education, educational experience, you heard that too. Their children go on to seek widely different careers, from fa, from following their father or mother to a career as a custodian, thank you, to becoming doctors, lawyers, scientists, even running for and getting elected to the Boards of Education. It is inconceivable to me that schools would not reward this model at every term, nurturing children who are part of the educational community. I ask you, I ask you to be sensible, to be considerate, to be reasonable, and abandon this fool's errand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Gwen Samuel?
My name is Gwen Samuel, I'm the president and founder of the Connecticut Parents Union. We work with parents across the state of Connecticut to protect the educational rights of children. So the issue that we're here today to talk about-
We have your address for the record?
Oh, I'm from Meriden, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're here today and you're thinking we're talking about a Norwalk issue, but we're talking about the state of Connecticut issue. You got cities in New Haven, Hartford, Waterbury, Meriden, we're all watching what you do in Norwalk. You are beholden to the children of Norwalk, end of story. You are a statutory body that is creatures of the state. You have an obligation to keep all children, all 11,000 plus children, safe, accessing great schools, safe schools, maintain schools, that's your obligation. And the fact that you think by calling someone a grown woman of color, a girl, and then say she crying black, like there's something wrong with being black. Now see, this is very serious because forty percent of your children are diverse. So if a child come to you and say, I think someone's bullying me, or harassing me, or threatening me, or I feel unsafe, what are you going to say? Oh, the child crying black? The child crying Hispanic? The child crying Asian? That's irresponsible. It's disrespectful, it's irresponsible, and they're not for people that are elected. Now, if you don't like your position, let the Norwalk people know so they make sure you don't get back in these positions. It's really that simple. And to all your parties, and this goes to Governor Malloy and all your parties in different positions, if they condone what you do, they don't get elected either. And that's the power of the people in this room. So again, I say this to you as a parent, because nobody's gonna say, my boy crying black. Do you know if you call a grown man boy? That means you're degrading him. Back in the day, in the civil rights era, before the civil rights era, when you call a person boy, that means they had no value. So that means Ms. Mosley don't have a value, but yet the people voted for her and everyone else that's with her. So again, I say with you, that you need to have the necessary conversations with the people who voted you in. Because if you don't want the office, let them know and they'll put someone else in there. Thank you very much.
No applause, please. Brian Meek, 11 Cranberry Woods Road. First, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak before you're here tonight. Thank you for all your hard work. I'm a, I attended Cranberry, West Rocks, Norwalk High. Gonna send my daughter to Cranberry next year. Part of that decision came down from the hard work you guys are doing on this board. Thought long and hard about Fatima and All Saints, but looking at the hard work you guys are doing, especially with the P-Tech Academy, I see the glass is half full here. When I was in school, the town was incredibly diverse, I think it's as diverse now. It'll probably be as diverse as it was from now until and ever. You know, diversity, somebody asked, it includes diversity of opinions. So now when an elected board has different opinions and they come up with a decision to make, they vote that way and we move on. You know? The way to change that opinion is to change the electoral makeup. That's our fundamental right in a democracy. I would encourage everyone to continue pursuing those initiatives, but at the same time, continue to support the board and all the hard work they're doing. The glass is half full, this town's definitely moving forward and I commend you on all your work. Thank you.
The next person I have up, it's difficult to read the writing, I think it's Lenore Leighton, right after Brian Meek. Do you remember somebody putting that name down? On West Cedar Street? Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
My name is Lionel Chahon. I'm living 318 West Cedar Street, Norwalk, Connecticut. Unfortunately, I never have the luxury to come to school in America, but I work for the school system in Westport. I am a maintenance, I'm the president of the maintenance group over there for ASME. And for, I've been working over there for over eighteen years, sixteen years. And when I started working in Westport, they got two kinds of schools. The kinds where they got the custodians working for the schools, the public custodians, and the schools where they got private companies cleaning the schools. And they get rid of the private company because it's not working. And I also got my kids in the school here in Norwalk, one in the high school and one in the elementary school. And technically, when you see a custodian, you just don't see the kid, the guy who's cleaning the toilet, you see the guy who's making sure that everything works for your kid. Making sure that the door is closed so that way no intruders come and get into the schools, especially in these times. When I was working in Westport, they asked me, Rolando, you got the opportunity to bring your kid to work to the school in Westport? And I say, no, because I believe the school in Norwalk is perfect. I believe, I believe that the education that my kids receive, my niece received, my nephew received, is being probably not the more luxurious, but all the teachers and all the personnel working is being responsible. But now that I see that they're trying to pull people that you don't know technically, it's not gonna be working. You're gonna save money, but these companies are gonna make profit. So they're gonna cut, if the custodian right now is cleaning thirty-five hundred square feet, now the new guy is gonna come to clean six thousand square feet. They're gonna have to cut corners everywhere and unfortunately, the service is not gonna be the same. We try to keep people in Norwalk busy, try to keep the people in Norwalk earning the money and be proud to be working for Norwalk. Because that's why I did. I, I keep my kids in Norwalk because I believe in the Westport Public Schools. I believe that, I'm in chat now, listening to all the problems going through the Board of Education in Norwalk, because I always say that you guys have been working for the behalf of my kids. And please try to do it. Thank you very much.
John Romano, 179 East Rocks Road, and I'd like to know if bodyguards are available for after this meeting. I've heard a lot of people here tonight say a lot of different things and I just want to speak to me being an avid reader, reading reports, and actually renewing pride back in Norwalk and its school system, especially since our newest head of the schools, Mr. Rivera, and with my, under the helm of Michael Lyons. And then I read all these controversial articles, you know, remarks that Jack Ciomanti made. And again, being a reader, being a reasonable person, when I read that remark, I could have found a little objection to it, but I completely understood the meaning behind it. And that meaning was that, excuse me?
Folks, folks, like, nobody else was interrupting.
I mean, I, my, my, my takeaway was, it's like the boy that, the sky is falling kind of a remark. And in today's society, especially where remarks were leveled and accusations were made, that no proof was forthcoming, because I've been following the stories unless I've missed their article. To me, that's very, very unfair to malign people and put all kinds of pressure on people that are really working very hard for the betterment of our kids in our schools. I've been talking to a lot of parents, Brian being one of them, there were many of us, and I have children, and I've lived in Knoll over sixty years, from five to forty-five. And I have a daughter that's gonna be going into kindergarten this coming year. And I'm happy about our public school system, where I may not have been as happy going back in years gone by, because I feel very confident, reading an article about our superintendent of schools the other night in the paper made me feel very proud that he was proud to be in Norwalk and to work for the betterment of all our children. And at the end of the day, and some have said this here, it, bottom line is our kids and, and the experience that they have. Now, I'm not gonna weigh in on the union guys, my cousin Tony Calendrino, who's a union higher up, will get really mad at me. And hopefully, you guys will work out something with the city and everybody will be the better for it. But please, I mean, look for understanding and, and work these things out. It's very important and to use this race card, which is happening, is, takes away from the positive side of what could be accomplished.
Tony Santa Maria?
My name is, um-
Can we please be fair and let Mr. Santa Maria speak?
Come on, guys.
My name is Tony Santa Maria. Glad to be here tonight. And I want to thank the board for the wonderful two teachers, bound teachers, homebound teachers for my carriage, bear please. I hope I don't have to come back and fight over it. In August, I'll be back. Because, you know, homebound, my kid was a special ed, they threw him off, just like that, without a safety net. Because there was no money. Special ed, I remember in the old times, we used to keep him up in the attics, in the basements, now we put him in prison. Because we kick him off and then the custodians gotta deal with him. Because they do a better job- And then the custodians gotta deal with him, because they do a better job than the councils. They're over there, you know, hey, come on, come on down, walking him around, you know, and they still do their job. I went and got, remember, I went and got papers for my kid and they tried to arrest me. Then the first time I spoke, for the first time, because everybody was, "Come on, Mr. Santa Maria, speak, speak, you've been sitting there for three months." I've been checking out the scenery, you know, how these, because I like to watch things, how it works. I got called a effin' spic, Mexican, by the mayor. But the next day, we bump into the elevator. I thought I had to put my boxing gloves and everything. No, you know, we shook hands, he apologized, and I apologized to him too, because I called him a effing guinea. You know? Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, you treat me with respect, I'm gonna treat you with respect. And the board, it's being divided, divided completely, okay? And it gets hard, you know, it gets hard. I mean, we have a bad day and we don't wanna hear something and we blow up. But I remember, it's, it's, you know, we gotta get together. The kids are the ones suffering. They're the ones paying the price. I hear it's money, but I still see kids being kicked out of special ed. I still see no teachers being hired, but we're gonna hire privatized, which everything is gonna be extra. Oh, we're gonna put a screw here, the screw costs 30 cents, but we're gonna charge you 60 cents, plus the labor, 35 more dollars, because it's private, you know? These custodians we got, they do a wonderful job. And I tell you, we're making a mistake by, yeah, I know, I know, we're out of time, you know, and we run out, you know, we're making a mistake by privatizing it. They don't care. All they care is about their money. And, you know, Jack and Shirley and Mr. Mosey, I know it's always fights, you know, I always have fights here too. But the main thing is the kids, you know? I think, you know, when the mayor apologized to me, I was like, oh, I was shocked. Happened in the elevator, was nowhere to run, you know?
That will end our public comments section?
Excuse me, ma'am. My name is Tashida Roberts.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Tashida Roberts. I am a resident at 8 Hudson Street in Norwalk, Connecticut. I grew up and I went to school in Norwalk, from Cranberry, West Rocks to Norwalk High. It is unbelievable at how disinterested people on this board are. Everybody's playing with their phones or on their computers, they're not even looking at the people and paying attention to the people that are here and saying that they don't have to say anything. It hurts my heart to know that we have elected a board to come and, and take care of our children and we're not taking care of our children. If you're not interested, you just need to resign. Resign, because children need what I got. I got a great education from elementary school to high school. I got a college degree, and actually, I just graduated law school. So, yeah. For the students, for, for, for the children. Stop being so disinterested, stop, stop being so mixed up and mingled and broken apart. When comments like that are said, the girl who cried black, that should never be said. It should never be said. An apology needs to just be made, get it over with. The students are hurting. When you outsource jobs, I've seen so many people that took care of me in school. And the least you can do is keep those jobs in here. Why outsource jobs? Are you ready for the lawsuits, the sexual harassment, the things that are going on? If you're disinterested, don't be here. Let us know. Don't get re-elected. Be interested, so that more lawyers, doctors, teachers can come back and help this town. If you're disinterested, resign. But an apology needs to be made and you guys need to get together as one, because you're elected to take care of the children, children first. I don't even have any kids, but I want the children to have what I have. Graduate law school, do something other than tearing up my town. So think about it. If you're not interested, get off the board. If, if you're bored, 'cause, I mean...
What makes you think?
If you're bored?
Was there, was there anyone else that signed up? Excuse me, please?
Quiet, please, we're trying to see if anybody else is talking.
Yeah, is there anyone else that was on the sheet that by accident I did not call that you needed to speak?
My name is Shatika Fleming. I reside at 261 Eli Avenue. I am a mother of a seven-year-old child who has transferred from New York to come into school here, and I feel like he, my son, loves to learn, he loves to go to school. I have a daughter going into kindergarten and I am not sending her to Norwalk Public Schools, just because of the simple fact that my son transferred here. And for six months, for six months, my son sat in a corner with his face facing the school rules, behind something that happened on a school bus, which was a totally misunderstanding because the child did not speak English. Me, as a parent, I spoke to the assistant principal, I spoke to the principal, we had meetings. I said, "Well, is there a possibility that we can go through a 504 plan so we can figure out how this school can benefit my child?" Did I get offered that? No, not at all. But I'm supposed to be comfortable with sending my child to this school. I'm supposed to be okay with the fact that, oh, diversity, there's no discrimination, there's no racial, but of course, I'm gonna feel some type of way, because yet, there's another kid that's gone through the same similar situation and he was still, I felt like my son was sitting in isolation, and he had to do something correctly to get back to general population. How is that okay in elementary school? You're on, you don't understand why kids are dropping out, not going back to school in middle school, kids have no interest in high school, because they're not welcomed by the teachers. They're not happy being there. What do you expect? The dropout rate is ridiculous in a state in Norwalk. Our grades, our testing scores is horrible, but yet, nobody's concerned about this. Please, do something about it.
Okay, that should end your public comments this evening? Oh, one more? Okay, sorry.
All right, I'm, uh, I'm here, local 1303.
Your name?
Oh, Michael Falbo, 56 Winton Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut. 28 years here in town. Three kids, two graduated high school already, one a senior in Norwalk High. All right, I'm gonna talk about privatization, all right? I work in town of Westport, Parks and Rec. They just privatized the golf course. Four guys lost their jobs. The guys that, that came back into work, they went from getting 17, $20 an hour, 10 bucks an hour. No benefits, no overtime. How are you gonna support a family with that? What are you guys doing to the middle class? You're killing us, okay? Any of you guys gonna take a job without benefits, without good wages? No. Why should we? Why should any U.S. citizen be put down like that? I want answers, okay? I'm a voter here in town, all right? That's all I gotta say, thanks.
Okay, that concludes the public comments section of the agenda. Next item in the superintendent's report, Dr. Rivera.
Here, thank you. I just wanna make a few remarks to thank a couple of key partners who've made some very generous donations to the Norwalk Public Schools. One, last week, on Friday, Ray Allen, I don't know if any of you recognize that name, but Ray Allen is one of the best basketball players in the NBA. He's one of the best three-point shooters. Ray actually came to Norwalk, the Ray Allen Hope Foundation donated more than $30,000 for us to renovate a computer lab at Ponus Ridge, and it was really thrilling for him to be there. We had a number of students there and his message was really quite inspiring for the young people who were there. In addition, tonight on the board agenda, we're asking you to support the hiring of a number of positions, including curriculum and instruction site directors. These would allow us to restore to full-time position a key administrative role in our elementary schools. As you know, a couple of years ago, we had to, this district made a number of cuts and, and assistant principals were reduced in half, creating a bit of a dilemma we discussed this during the budget process. But this was possible because of a major grant from the Dalio Foundation. The Dalio Foundation, during the past couple of weeks, we finalized our agreement with them and will be receiving more than $1.1 million. In addition to that, the Dalio Foundation wants to support the hiring of coaches at our five Title I schools. So we're really excited and thankful to those key partners for that. Another item to report, we concluded this last Friday, our summer school programs. We've had, you know, a year ago, 400 and some odd students, grades K through 3, attending summer school at Brookside. It was really just a tip of the iceberg. We wanna have programs available for all of our students throughout the summer, to the extent that we can run them for five or six weeks. If we have the money, we should be doing that. And I'm really pleased that we were able to use some of our excess Title I funds to increase the number of students attending our K-3 summer school program to close to 700. So we had more than 200 more students attending our summer school program. In addition to that, we also, thanks to the Nellie May Foundation, were able to run a five-week summer program for students who left 8th grade and are going into 9th grade at Bryan McMahon as well as Norwalk High School. And that is also a terrific program. And I have to give a special thanks to Navalet, Peter Navalet of the Carver Center. They, Norwalk is very fortunate to have such an organization as that, which, when they put together a program, they do it with quality and they're serving a number of our students, including students from Briggs who attended a five-week program that, that they organized. We had 20, 25 of our students from Briggs attending that program. I will make another comment, though. As I looked at the participation rates in the different programs that were running in our secondary schools, they were, it was wonderful, because we were able to continue a number of programs. However, we're going to wanna make sure, as we go forward, that we don't lose any 9th graders. We want all of our 8th graders ready for 9th grade, and we want every single 9th grader ready for 10th grade. And so we're gonna have to make sure that we're providing the kind of summer programs for our young people, whether it's credit recovery or whether it's acceleration or enrichment, we wanna make sure that we are doing everything we possibly can and whatever it takes to make sure that our young people are successful, so that our graduation rates will continue to climb, so we don't have a situation where we're losing young people at the end of grade nine. There's another change that I did wanna share, that I did not get an opportunity at the last meeting in June. We had talked about conducting quality reviews of some of our programs and we worked with, with Yvette and her staff of the Mono Mono Program at Silver Mine, and they had an opportunity, not only to have a consultant come in, but they went out and visited some of the best programs that are out there. They, they took a team, they went to Boston, they looked at one of their very successful dual-language programs. And they're instituting a number of changes in their program to improve that program. And I just wanna thank that staff and their willingness and the changes in the program that we believe are gonna be good for kids, good for learning, good for language acquisition. And there are a number of changes that I'm happy to share with you in a final report. Finally, even though it's August, it's August 4th, we are all gearing up now for a new year, a lot of new programs in the works. We talked at the last meeting about the importance of addressing issues in our system about student engagement, the importance of making sure that all of our young people are connected, that adults make that, know their students, make that connection with their students, know how to create a growth mindset, a success mindset for our young people. We shared a little bit of what we're planning to do when we met with you last time. There's major training that's gonna be underway, beginning August 18th, when staff returns in that, in the course of that week, as well as in the weeks to come, with the professional development calendar that we share. So we, we really are gearing up for a big year. Many of the concerns that people talked about tonight, these are concerns that our agenda is about. These are the, these are the issues that we know we have to address. We know we want achievement gains for every single one of our children, no matter who they are, no matter where they come from. That is what we are committed to, and it's with that lens that we need to take steps to make sure that we're making the changes that are necessary. I will also say one final thing. I think it's important that, as I, as I listen to some parents tonight, that me in particular and my staff and others, that we make more effort to get out into the community, to share some of what's going on, to hear what folks have to say. And I think we'll be more than happy to do that, well above and beyond the, the meetings, the PTO meetings that I typically attend in the evenings. We're gonna do our best to reach out, to make sure that we are communicating with as many families as we can, to share information, to answer questions in a different kind of environment, so people have a better sense of what we're doing and we too can hear some concerns that folks have and, and have a greater dialogue amongst us. So with that, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rivera. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 61 Consent Calendar, 2A to B. Since there's so many personnel matters, I'm gonna take a consent, some people can talk about that if they want. So the consent calendar would just be item 1B, Approval of Budget Transfers. There's small, four small transfers. The budget chair would entertain a motion to approve the transfers. Chiamanti moves. Is there a second? Murray seconds. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item is Approval of Personnel. This is a long list of positions listed in the agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the appointments of the personnel on the schedule. Is there a motion? Mr. Barbus moves. Is there a second? Any second? Ms. Keez, seconds? Okay. Motion's moved and seconded. Discussion, Dr. Rivera, why don't you lay this all out for us?
Well, there are a number of recommendations here that are listed. One, as I mentioned a minute ago, are the curriculum and instruction site directors. These are positions, again, that we had talked about during the budget process. We basically worked closely with the union in terms of crafting the, the position description. We put it out there. We had probably over 60 applicants. We followed a process, there was a screening for those applicants. Then, the dilemma was, you, when you have 14 or 15 top-notch candidates and you have nine schools vying for positions, it became a bit competitive, if you will. In fact, on this particular agenda, there's only eight positions. There's one that's yet to be filled at a particular school, and that's Narromack Elementary School. However, we, we, we know that the committee is convening on August 11th, and we hope that they will be making a selection for their person. And, and based on what I know, there's an excellent candidate who, who is in the hopper for them. So those are, those are the positions for curriculum instruction site directors. There is a second position, which is the K-5 Instructional Specialist for Literacy. Again, this was a fairly competitive, well, competitive process in the sense that they were nine positions. There was a committee that recommended three people, obviously, went through another round of interviews, and then follow up with, with reference checks and just reviewing progress and other evidence. And we have a very, very strong candidate that we're recommending for that position. Third, housemaster positions. There was a vacancy... There was a vacancy at Norwalk High School that we advertised for. At the same time, we, an opportunity arose for us to make a transfer, thereby creating two vacancies at Norwalk High. We were able to hire the two top finalists coming through that process, and I was very pleased with that, and conferred regularly with Mr. Roberts on that process. And Bryan McMahon also had a process, a very competitive process, with excellent candidates. And there's a recommendation that I've made in terms of that particular hire. If there are any questions, Lee Palmer is here, Tony DeDonna, who was involved in organizing and participating in some of the interviews, are here to answer any other detailed questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? Ms. Mosby?
Hi. Yes, the selection committee, who was that committee consist of? Was it parents, teachers? And was the diversity hiring plan format followed?
Yeah.
Do I ask it to you, or do I ask?
Thank you. Yes, I'm going to defer that to Lee, in terms of some of the specifics around the selection committee, and/or Tony, in terms of responding, but Lee will go to you.
Yes.
Yeah, let me get a tape. Whoa. Thank you.
I can speak to the, two things. One is the process itself, which is really a process that has been in place for some time as part of diversity hiring practice. And the recruitment, or I should say, the interviews I was personally involved with were the House Master Position at the high school. And in answer to your specific question, I was involved with the second round of that interview process, and it was comprised of staff, administrators, students, community members, and also our Director of Human Relations, who sat on that committee and kind of guided the committee through the process in terms of what the protocols were. And as I understand it, that is the process that we have utilized and has been in place for some time.
Any other questions, issues?
No, I just wanted to.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
No, your turn?
Yes.
Any other questions?
No. So we have, I guess, notes or paperwork that has what each person, you know, felt in regards to a candidate?
Yes.
So we do have that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'd like to just briefly congratulate Dr. Rivera, who, on the, obviously, a tremendous amount of work had to go into doing this. This is a real restoration of some losses that we had a couple of years ago, but it's also completely reorienting these positions from simply being administrative positions into true curricular instructional positions. And these people are going to be going into our elementary schools just as the new K5 literacy program takes an effect. So the timing is perfect, and the approval here allows them a few weeks to get their feet wet before school starts. So my congratulations to you for being able to get all this work done in a short period of time.
Thank you.
All right, since nothing else, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the appointments, please indicate. And it's unanimous. Thank you. All right. All right, next item is Item 6-3, Approval of Executive Support Group. Local 129, CFSAA, FL-CIO Agreement. This is the new union contract with the ESG Group. And Mr. Barbus, Chairman Negotiations Committee, brings up to speed on what we got.
Sure. So this contract, the ESG, the Executive Service Group, is probably our smallest union. This contract covers the period from July 2012 to June 2016, so it's a four-year-long contract. The basic agreement was arrived at on, in early October, October 9th, we had a tentative agreement. Subsequent to that, we had all sorts of little bits of minutia that took a little longer than we had hoped or expected to take. But it is now all, you know, it's all solved, and everything is set, and it's ready for your signature today. I would just, kind of the key points of this contract, just so everyone on the board is familiar with this. You know, we tightened up some of the definitions in the contract. We, certain management rights were, I would say, clarified. The insurance, in terms of health insurance, like many of our other, all of our other unions, everyone is going to be paying kind of their greater share. We did go to an HSA program, you know, Health Savings Account Program, and over time, they'll be paying, the employees will be paying slightly more of their premium, and the board will fund initially 75% of the HSA, and then that will decline as we go forwards. Same thing with the dental insurance. The retiree, health insurance for retirees, will apply only to current employees, those hired prior to June 30th, 2012. And then, are these employees, their pension plans are covered by the city's pension plan, and the city did change their pension plan such that the, our old, our existing employees are grandfathered, but future employees are going to have to go onto the new, the city's new plan. In terms of sick leave, the basic change there is you couldn't have unlimited accumulation of sick leave days. There will no longer, this is true in all of our contracts, we've been working on this, to remove longevity bonuses. And the salary settlement going forward, the increases, it was a freeze in 1213, 2.0% in 1314, two and a half in 1415, and two and a half in 1516. And I think those are the highlights of this contract. If there are any other questions that you can answer.
And this contract has been approved by the union?
Union has approved and signed it. You should have a copy in front of you, signed by them, such that it's awaiting your signature once the board votes to approve it.
All right, thank you. Any comments, questions? Ms. Mosby?
Yes, so the union president and all of its members, as you stated, agreed with this. And we, after we agreed today, if we agreed today, then there probably won't be anyone that's going to come out to the mic next week saying that they're not comfortable with it.
Not to my knowledge. I have no reason to believe that. There are only nine union members, so it's pretty small.
I know, but.
But obviously, but I think everyone was consulted, which is why in the end it took this long.
Yeah, I want to make sure everyone's voice was heard on this, so.
I believe, yes, I believe so.
Ms. Murray?
Just to point a procedure, and you can correct me if I'm not following on the process that we followed with the negotiating committee, who would actually meet, but also would come out and talk with the board on the executive session, whether it be with the attorney. But these, what you're just outlining to us, we have an opportunity to have input, we have an opportunity to have that discussion with the negotiation committee. And that step was not included. So secretly, I just wanted to know, have we changed the process?
What I will say, Rosa, as I said, there was a tentative agreement that was came to on October 9th for this contract. I was not chairman of the negotiations committee at that time. I think it was in November or December. So I think this pretty much was handed to me kind of as a done deal. I was really not, the committee was not part of day-to-day negotiations. It pretty much was all sorted between the union and staff.
Well, I guess it's just a standard, and Ms. Lyons, maybe this is directed to you, is a standard process, that the committees actually meet with the board, whether it's an executive session, and bring them up to speed on what is actually being discussed?
Yes, as you know, I've, on a number of occasions, called executive sessions where we got reports, particularly from Ms. Haney, we used to do that every couple of months, and we'd have an executive session update on all of the labor union negotiations. I think what happened here was that there were, we did discuss this in executive session, you know, back in September, October of last year, and the contract was, in terms of all of the big-ticket items, the pay rates, the insurance coverage and everything, was pretty much agreed to. What's been happening since then is minor fine-tunings. I mean, it is my intention, with the two big negotiations going on now, which is with NASA and the NFT, to have an executive session at the next board meeting, to get a report from the committee as they go into the final stages of those negotiations, so the board can give executive session input to the committee before final decisions are made. Okay. Any other questions, concerns? All right. I don't think I actually took a motion on that. Chair will take a motion to approve the new collective bargaining agreement with the executive support group. Is there a motion? Ms. Keez moves. Mr. Chairman Monte seconds. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the contract, please indicate. Vote 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. All opposed? 1. Any abstentions? 1. Okay, 5 yes, 1 no, 1 abstention. Motion carries, and the contract is approved. All right, now we have four central office executive positions for appointment. I guess we'll do these one at a time. Chairman entertain a motion to appoint Robert Deluski as Director of Labor Relations. Is there a motion? Mr. Chairman Monte moves, second. Ms. Keez seconds. Dr. Rivera?
This is part of the human resource reorganization that we indicated we would be moving forward with. And in the course of that, there was a consultant that we brought in who looked at some of the needs of the organization. They made some recommendations. We shared those recommendations with the board. Since that time, we then proceeded with the actual hiring process. Lee Palmer organized the hiring for these positions, which would be part of his team. Obviously, there's a commitment to improving the quality of service delivery coming from the Human Resource Office, having, in fact, a workforce that we can actually begin to deliver on some of our goals and plans, as we have set forth, and as this budget, this board has established. So these are really the four positions. So I'm speaking both to Labor Relations, which was a .8 position, which was part of the mix, which we had some discussion about in the past. And then there are three other positions, which are the three specialist positions which are being organized, and their specific information, I believe, is included in your packet and was sent on Friday.
Okay. Ms. Mosby?
The hiring process for these four individuals, was it the same process that you had when you went through the process with the assistant principals?
Sure, please.
No, the process was not the same. These are non-certified positions, all of them. They are positions that, obviously, were recommended by, through the study. We posted the positions, screened all of the candidates that applied. I did telephone interviews with candidates that I felt met qualifications for the position on paper, and then also had face-to-face interviews. And in addition to that, had final interviews that were conducted by myself as the HR Director, and with Bruce Morris, the Director of Human Relations, with the finalists. And before we recommended those candidates to the superintendent, Bruce and I had interviewed and agreed that they were all viable candidates for those positions.
Our normal hiring process consists of an interview committee, a committee, you know, that's put together. So from what I'm getting from you, is that you're saying that you and Bruce Morris was only two people that interviewed these candidates?
That is correct. That is correct. And again, I did obviously speak with Bruce Morris, who has been in charge of the process, as I understand it, in the past. These are non-certified positions. There is a different process for certified positions. And according to Mr. Morris, the process that we followed was consistent with the practice for non-certified positions within the district.
I'm not sure about that, if that's all that accurate, because being, following the district in a sense, when hiring positions, there's always been some type of interview committee, and you just went through that process with the assistant principals. And I'm just trying to figure out why that same process, that hiring process that Norwalk Public School adhered to, was not used in this instance right here. I mean, I was reviewing some of the resumes, and I needed to find out exactly what was the criteria that, as you said, you selected some, because according to the job description, they were asking for so many years of human resource specialist experience, and some of these resumes do not have that type of experience. So I am a little concerned that if only one person is screening these people, when we have norm, the normal has always been a committee. And even principals in schools, when they want to hire a secretary, they normally have a committee. So I'm just a little, you know, confused as to why it's just one person. And as far as Mr. Morris, he is the Director of Human Relations, and his role is supposed to be observing the process, which has always been observing the process, to make sure that it is done right. So in a sense, if we take him out of the equation, then that means only one person screened these people, interviewed these people, and decided to send a recommendation over to the superintendent, which, to be quite honest, that's not fair to people who have actually applied for these jobs, you know, from the job posting, you know, site, and people who have all these experience, but only one person was the one that determined. Because I have reviewed a couple of these resumes, and on these resumes, there are some that, to be quite honest, is kind of like weak in that HR specialist area. And I'm just concerned that that person or those people were able to go by with just only one person, and not a committee. So in a sense, it's like the hiring process was not followed in this instance, where it was followed for the assistant principal, but it wasn't followed with this.
If I could, I believe, and I don't have a copy of the hiring policy in front of me, but I believe that it specifically addresses certificated individuals as opposed to non-certified. And it does prescribe the committees for the certificated staff, which we work to always comply with. In this particular case, that was not a stipulated requirement.
My, responding to that, then if the job posting is asking for specific experience, and you see on some resumes that they don't have that kind of experience, and that person is being recommended to get a $75,000 job, I have some questions in regards to that as well.
All of these individuals meet the minimum qualifications that are articulated in the job specification and in the job posting?
I review these resumes, and I'm not going to sit here and point out people, but some of these people on, with the resumes, do not meet the qualification. And to be quite honest, I'm not able to see all the other people who did apply for the job, and to see what their qualification were, since only one person had the opportunity to screen these people and make a recommendation off of that. And not in compliance with our hiring practice, especially our diversity hiring practice.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Ms. Murray?
Getting ready to vote on this.
If there's no more comments, yes.
Right. And I think my, I know my position, I'm going to remain the same on the money, the dollars that we're spending in this area, when we have not restored money in positions and areas of the school. and areas of the school. I've said this before, and I haven't changed on this issue. I believe there are some of these positions that the responsibilities can be covered with staff that we already have in place. I do understand we have issues in the HR department that needs to be corrected. I believe partial hiring of this would make a difference in that department. But I do believe that we have some duplication here, and given the cuts and what we're working with in the schools, and as I call, we have not restored, haven't even looked in that direction, that I could not support this part of the hiring for central office.
Any other comments? Ms. Mosby?
And I'm in agreement, and I'd like to extend the fact that the hiring process wasn't followed the way it should have been followed, and I'm not going to be supporting this as well. Because if we're going to be consistent, as we keep saying, we need to be all the way around. We just can't just pick and choose when we're going to use the hiring process.
All right. Anything else? If not, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the appointment of Robert Deluski as Director of Labor Relations, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. All opposed? Two. Five in favor, two opposed. Motion carries. Mr. Deluski is approved. I'm thinking that maybe since the remaining three positions are all the specialists for the department, maybe we could act on those in a single motion. So the chair would entertain a motion to appoint Barbara Nielsen, Human Resources Specialist, to Joseph Rodriguez, Human Resources Specialist, and Chris Enriquez-Little, Recruitment and Placement Specialist. Is there such a motion? Mr. Chairman, I move. Is there a second? Any second, Mr. Barbas? Okay, moved and seconded. Again, Dr. Rivera, please bring us up to speed on these positions.
Well, those are essentially, in my prior comment, these were part of the reorganization of the HR unit. Given the over 1,000 employees that we have, and trying to correct a number of inefficiencies, if you will, within that department, and to try to improve our management in that area, these were positions that were included, shared previously with the board, budgeted, included within our budget, our board-approved budget. And these are the positions that have been organized, as they have under Mr. Palmer's leadership, to advance the goals and the objectives that we have for that unit, to improve service delivery and to improve recruitment of a diverse staff in the system and to help us advance HR.
Okay. Any discussion, questions? Ms. Mosby?
Again, I'd just like to say that reviewing these resumes, some of these individuals do not have the qualification or experience that was posted on that job posting. And I just want to make sure that that's heard, and I'm not going to be supporting these positions.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Murray?
Be noted, so noted in the minutes, that I, once again, will not support these positions because I feel that we're looking at restoring positions, services at the schools. So I just want that noted in the minutes, and I will not be supporting these positions.
Okay. I'll note for the record that the board unanimously approved a budget that made these allocations to the central office positions instead of to the schools. People are, of course, entitled to change their minds, but this plan was in the strategic plan, which the board approved. It's in the board budget, which the board approved. And Dr. Rivera is simply carrying out that plan. Personally, I'm, again, pleased to see him not simply putting, you know, plans out there or talking in general terms about how he's going to reform and improve operations, but he's actually making it happen with structural changes, with new personnel, as well as with policies and initiatives for these folks to work on. So I'm happy to support all three of these appointees.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Murray?
My, this actually surfaced and immediately, we have a finance committee with the superintendent, and I'm sure he can speak for himself. When, I think it's become apparent that when a vote is taken for an overall, and I call the top of the line of what we are agreeing to, the 10 points, his objectives, that is what this board voted for, at least that's what I voted for. But putting the process in place, not, and not micromanaging it, I do agree that we should not make micromanaging, but I do believe there are breakdowns and there are other areas where we do need to have discussion prior to it coming to a vote. I think that's what would eliminate this type of discussion that we're having now. And it's not that we have to micromanage, it's not that we changed our mind. How it's delivered, I think, is just something that, it's just the fact that superintendent and board should have that discussion. And I just feel that's not changing my mind, but the fact of seeing it, that we need to have points in between. We kind of check in, we're actually looking at what we, how it's happening, not second-guessing and not micromanaging the superintendent. So there was no change in my mind.
All right. Ms. Mosby?
And again, there's not a change in my mind either, it's just that I stated that the process was not followed, the same as all the other process. The hiring process was not implemented in these hires. And if we're going to be consistent, if we want students to be consistent with policies and processes, we need to make sure that we adhere to it with these hires as well. And plus the qualifications, I'm looking at what is on that job description, what's the qualification, experience level and so forth. And I've reviewed the resume. I asked for the resume because it was not part of the package in the first place, but I did ask for it, and I reviewed it. Some on here does not, you know, the qualification, they are lacking. It's not as extensive as what was on the job posting. And I was just concerned and curious as to who all applied, because it's not fair to individuals who submitted their resume for a job with the experience, and then by one person, they're being eliminated. So I didn't change my mind either, I'm just, you know, stating that the process was not followed. That's all.
Any other discussion, comments, questions? Ms. Harris?
I just want to know, may I, in your opinion, was the process valid?
For non-certified staff, I'm not aware that there is a policy that dictates specific committees that need to be formed with membership, as we do, as we have, for certificated staff. So in the area of non-certificated, the fact that we posted the positions, the fact that there was interviews conducted and their criteria were reviewed, talking about a department in a particular, relatively small department compared to others, as far as I'm concerned, the head of that unit, just as I like to interview people who report directly to me, and I like to do my due diligence, in this particular case, then our new chief for human resources did that, engaged another individual. As far as I'm concerned, I've supported these and supported advancing them down the board agenda tonight. We, you know, you have very frank discussions about candidates and their qualifications, and you, I raised those kinds of questions, and they were answered to my satisfaction and felt that it was appropriate to place them on the agenda.
I do have another question. Do we feel that there were other candidates who may come back later and feel that they were more qualified than the people's names who were put forward?
Probably was.
Does anyone have a question?
You never know what people are going to do.
Well, I guess I ask that because they seem to feel very strongly that people were not qualified. So that's what I'm asking, because, you know, things like that have happened.
Right. I mean, it, obviously, it could happen. There's, again, the, these individuals meet the qualifications that were posted, were selected based on the interviews and what they contributed, as well as our review of their background, and I believe that it's warranted for your approval.
Mr. Barbas?
Since there seems to be some disagreement on the different processes, and I have to say, I've been on the board two years, I'm not particularly, I can't say I'm familiar with them in any level of detail, maybe at the next board meeting, we could just have, like, a little tutorial. I know Mr. Palmer is, you know, recent arrival, Mr. Deluski's not here tonight because he's on a well-deserved vacation, but he's been here for some time. Tony Dodona's been here for quite some time. I won't say the number of years, Tony, but, you know, maybe the three of them, you know, because, you know, give that consistency and say, look, this is what the process is for, and I don't even want to use, just say certified, because that means a lot of different things, but this is what it is for, you know, a principal, an assistant principal, or now what's called a curriculum instruction specialist, maybe housemasters, and then various central office positions, just so that there isn't this level of misunderstanding, and we know exactly what the process is. So whenever another hire comes in, we can just look at this and be like, check, 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 and there's no questioning.
We will do that.
If we can. I mean, I would imagine it would be too much work, and then there's no confusion as to what exactly the policy is. It's there in writing, and there's no question.
Ms. Mosby?
Well, we have Mr. Dodona here tonight, and he's been with the district for a while, so maybe he can share some light on what it was in the past that, you know, with the process. What are you saying? He's here. He's right there. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but...
Tony, you're on.
In the past, as to best of my knowledge, every position involves more than one person interviewing. Site-based, when I was principal of Norwalk High and we hired secretaries, there was always the principal and a couple of people to interview. When we interview secretaries at central office for the curriculum department, there's always one or two, three people in the interview process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right. We will therefore proceed to a vote. Excuse me. All those in favor of approving Barbara Nielsen, Joseph Rodriguez, and Chris Little, please indicate. One, two, three, four, opposed. One, two, abstention? One. Okay. So four yes, two no, one abstention. Motion carries, and the individuals are appointed. All right. Next on the agenda is 7A, update on Norwalk Early College Academy. Dr. Rivera?
Yes, there are two reports that were overdue, that we promised the board, on the Norwalk Early College Academy and Briggs High School turnaround. With respect to the NECA report, it's included in the, I believe it was sent out on Friday, as Briggs, the principal there, had prepared a 16-page report, which we reduced to two pages. She's here to answer any questions that you have, but basically, they were intended to provide some updated information for board members.
Okay. Any board members have any questions on either the Norwalk Early College Academy or the Briggs High School summary report that were in the packet? Ms. Mosby?
Yeah, a couple of things on the Briggs, Briggs. I guess later on, we'll get more of a detailed report on how all of this is being implemented. Right now, this is like a summary, and I kind of, I would like to get, you know, details as how we're going to go through the process and everything, with the plan that we're putting in place.
Was that with PTEC? I'm sorry, I missed the first.
Of Briggs.
With Briggs.
Now, PTEC, that's with Briggs, you know, because right now, this is just a summary. You say you're going to develop and refine the plans and all that, so I just want to make sure that...
Could I make a suggestion? That might be a good topic for us to bring to the curriculum committee, where we could go through detailed plan of how it is and take some good quality time here to walk it through.
That would be great. That would give us more opportunity to really, you know, dig into it. And as far as the PTEC, we, basically, with that, which I'm very happy to see, you know, the kids there, and can we just go in and maybe review and see what kind of monitors that can be put in place to make sure that, you know, these kids are successful, like, say, something after a quarter or something, to come back, you know, and see, because we just want to make sure that these kids don't fail.
Yep.
So, you know, just something, because I didn't see anything, any mechanism or something that's put in place that can go back and say, okay, you know, out of the 100 kids I see, you know, after six weeks, you know, 30 of them is starting up. So, I mean, if you could just keep us, you know, apprised as to what's going on with that, so that we can be on top of that, so in case they need extra help or something, that we can give them that support.
Yes.
Okay. All right. We'll put the, I will put Briggs on the next curriculum agenda. More detailed update. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Murray?
On the PTEC, Dr. Rivera, could that be added on for our finance committee meeting? The financial end of the PTEC, exactly how that's going financially, how that's broken down. We also, it was a concern at one point, I can't remember which board member brought it up, but the fact of that we have to sustain a lot of this after, and how that would look. Maybe that's part of the other thing, but the financial aspect of it is what I'm concerned about, and could that be reported out in the finance committee?
Certainly.
Once we decide, determine what date that will be.
Certainly. Yep. All right. Very good. All right. Next item on the agenda is committee and representative reports. I know July was a real slow month. I don't think we had any committee meetings, but are there any committee chairs that have any reports? Mr. Barbas, yes, you were still busy with negotiations.
So there is a lot going on with negotiations right now. I guess work with our most active one and work backwards. So the administrators, which is NASA, that, under state law, those negotiations were to start June 26th, with mediation to start on August 8th, and arbitration to start on September 2nd. That schedule, we have not adhered to, I will admit, but it was kind of agreed to by both parties. So we did have just our first meeting last week on July 30th. We set the ground rules, and each side made their proposals. We had a lot of scheduling challenges because of people's vacations and their attorney had a lot of other commitments. So we are, our next meeting is actually now going to be till August 26th, and that's going to be a conference call. And then we're meeting again on the 27th, and we've scheduled mediation for September 3rd, with mediator being Lori Kane, which was mutually agreed upon. You know, staff prepared our proposal, which is what we submitted to them last week, and that will, you know, I'll keep you updated. My committee colleague member, Magaly Beavis, was in attendance with me. Mr. Lyons and Mr. Chairman, I weren't able to be there, but anyway, we've gotten started with that, with those negotiations. The National Federation of Teachers, NFT, that contract, it's in its third year this year, but under the arbitration ruling, we had a reopener for wages and insurance, and that is on the exact same schedule as NASA, so we are supposed to start on the 26th, mediation on August 8th, and arbitration on September 2nd. We have been having some informal discussions amongst ourselves and banding about ideas, and we, both sides seem to be very much on the same page. We just met again today, and we're going to meet again next week and see if we can find something that is agreeable to both sides, which we feel we're well along our way. And last of all, NFEP, and I think maybe that was some of the, you know, was referred to indirectly a few minutes ago. We met kind of through the spring, and a lot of that, a lot of members of that union were unduly impacted by the school system's restructuring, and we cut hours, we terminated certain positions, and, you know, under Superintendent Rivera's direction, we have really felt we needed to provide enhancements, I think was the term that we used, and there's some crazy job... And there are some crazy job descriptions like stenographers and switchboard operators. And so we realized we wanted to give these employees enhancements and at the same time kind of clean up a lot of this arcane language. And we've made some really great progress on that. I think everyone's very, very happy and I would expect, we would want to discuss at the next Board meeting, either the next one or the subsequent one, an executive session to go over kind of the rough parameters of where we are and what issues, you know, any Board members might have. But I think everyone will be very pleased by what we've accomplished here. It's kind of a win-win, providing more opportunities for those employees as well as kind of joining the, I think that's been our theme is let's join, let's put these employees in the 21st century.
Okay. As I said, I'm going to schedule an executive session for the full Board to get a real nuts and bolts detailed report from your committee on the status of those three negotiations for our next meeting, which is August 19th. Ms. Mosby?
Not yet. Mr. Barbas, I just have a simple question. With the NFT, can you explain to me what informal discussions meant?
I was contacted by the leadership of the NFT and asked, would we meet and could we kind of talk about some rough ideas? And so I talked to staff as to kind of where, where the thinking was as to, you know, it's only, remember, the only thing we can discuss are wages and insurance. So I think insurance is pretty straight, you know, we're on a schedule, there isn't really, we're not going to change that dramatically. But wages, you know, there's, you know, you've really got two components, you know, what they call GWI, you know, gross wages, and then steps. And, you know, how could we look at that any differently than we have in the past? And so that's, you know, so that's how, so it was at their instigation to, you know, can we talk? And so I kind of got a feeling for where we were, you know, the Board or NPS Central Office, where they thought we should be. And with that knowledge, I sat and we've had a couple informal meetings and I kept my committee members apprised of what that's going on and we even had a little discussion. Magaly and I sat down last week and kind of talked about what some of the, you know, what's been discussed.
Okay.
Okay, does that help?
Yeah, thanks for clarifying that.
All right. That deals with that and that. I'm sorry, Ms. Murray.
Committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Once I have an opportunity to meet and to speak with the Superintendent and Rich on the calendar and our schedule, we will be changing the Finance Committee meeting from the 27th. If there is some recommendations, some other dates that the Finance Committee members would like to use as far as a date alternative to this, if you want to let me know before we leave. And then that way I can then look at the calendars of our staff and then see which would be the best day to hold the August Finance Committee meeting.
All right. Okay, next, any Board member announcements? Ms. Mosby?
We went to Ponis and we saw Ray Allen. So that was a highlight of the week and he gave a wonderful speech to kids to encourage them and we got to meet his wife and his kids, adorable family. And it was, it was a very good event and I'm very pleased that Ponis was able to get, you know, that, get him to donate that computer lab. And I think that, you know, that's a positive and in the right direction.
Thank you. Anything else? Ms. Murray?
That was made possible by Ed Singleton. Did I get that correct?
I believe Ed had a connection.
Contact with that. It was an outstanding event, well-attended and we're talking about summer months, so it was excellent and the message was definitely on point for our young people. My other comment would be that for the spotlight of our executive committee, when you determine who the spotlight will be focused on, is that something that we can get as a Board prior to you actually inviting them? If that could be something that can be sent out, is my question. I don't know the timeframe from the executive committee actually selecting the spotlight and the time that you actually have to contact that person to attend.
Well, usually, you know, as you know, Ms. Keys sort of took on the spotlight and she organizes these things quite a ways in advance. Maybe my suggestion would be, you know, when you are working on things coming down the pike, you just send a generalized email to the whole Board and let them know, okay, you know, here's, here's a list of things that we're thinking of doing, you know, it hasn't been finalized yet, but here's, here's concepts. You know, a lot of these things come in from, from school principals.
That's correct. That is the way we've done in the past.
Asking.
Yes, exactly. Asking the staff because they're there, they know.
I also welcome, like, I think we spoke about this before, if you have suggestions, we've brought this out a couple, I think, a couple meetings ago, anything that you're interested in and that you feel should be spotlighted, to let me know. I also work closely with Brenda, so Brenda and I try to plan it in advance. We had Mr. Weinberg here, but we had meetings that were canceled, so he was supposed to come probably about a month ago or two months ago. He was able to come tonight. So I try to plan spotlights well in advance, so we have them, you know, consecutively in every, you know, first and third of our meeting. But I will send, once I know in advance, which have already been done for now, but I'm going to start working on spotlights for the next couple of meetings and I'll just send an email out to everyone, to all the Board members, so you have an idea of what's going on and who's coming in.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about the ones that have been scheduled. But the fact of it is, it gives us an opportunity to see who they are, if we have any comments, if we have anything that we want to make recommendations. That allows the Board to be able to make that in a timely manner because once you've invited the person to the Board meeting telling them they're being spotlighted, there's nothing else that can be done. So I just feel that if we know in advance, there was a time we knew about the executive sessions and, you know, we're part of that, so we've been through that in the conversation. So I don't want to reopen that. But the fact of it is, if that can be sent out, the Board is always, we've had spotlights forever, so I do, you know, I'm familiar with it, so the fact of it, if you just send that out before you finalize it, that would be appreciated.
Okay. That might be difficult at times because it's kind of, sometimes it's usually in advance, but usually we'll know in advance, but sometimes it's last minute. But, I mean, I could certainly give you ideas and send it out. I mean, we want, I think the key for us, and I understand what you're saying and I could certainly work on that, is to highlight all the great things that are happening. So, I mean, sometimes it, usually we try to plan in advance, but sometimes it's last minute and we just want to get the word out and, you know, honor some of the kids and teachers, like we had Mr. Weinberg here, to show the great things that are happening. But I certainly can work on some of it.
A little more systematically so that we can then have that opportunities to Board members to see exactly who's being highlighted. And if we have comments, we can make those so that therefore it be in a timely manner.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
All right. Okay, we'll move on to Item 8, which is Approval of the Minutes for the July 1, 2014 meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Ms. Keys moves as a second. Mr. Barbas? Any corrections, changes to the minutes? Hearing none, we will proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes, please indicate. Unanimous. All right.
Mike, I forgot, I wanted to make one other comment and you were asking for Board member comments, I forgot, I never got my hand up.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to thank Ms. Harris. Her, putting, a very nice lady, she's a Westport teacher named, she's a Chinese language teacher at Staples High School, Lily Kessinger, and she actually wrote the Superintendent a letter thanking Sherelle and I for all the work we did. There was an exchange program that was sponsored by a group called Spiral International and they sent a group of middle schools and teachers and a principal to come here and we hosted them. I'm not sure how this all came about, but we hosted them at Bryan McMahon and she contacted Sherelle and then Sherelle put her in touch with me and anyway, we hosted, I hosted the principal and five different Norwalk families hosted a bunch of these kids and they ended up having a really great time and she was very, very appreciative and it was a really neat program.
Great. All right, thank you. All right, that completes the agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Keys moves. Barbara seconds, all in favor. Meeting is adjourned. All right.